I'd like to welcome the participants to the Joint Harbor Planning Board meeting of January 22nd. Close order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Delicio, not here yet. Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Almeyne, here. Ms. Gilbert?
Here.
And Ms. Tenny?
Here.
We have a fun tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak, and this meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledgment or receipt of correspondence. Cybode's been busy. We have one from the sixth, the ninth, the tenth, and the twelfth. Not all of them were directed to us, but we have been copied on them. At this time, I allow any public comments for items not on the agenda with a two-minute time limit. Does any from, anybody from the public wish to speak? Okay, I want to take something a little bit out of order. Before we start, I would like to take the introduction of our, to the town and to us, of our town planner, Mark Resnick, who's here with us today. Thank you, Mark. Welcome. And, uh, we're looking to working with you.
Thank you.
For the, there's a few hot button items coming up, so we, you can guide us and get engaged.
Yes, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Does the board have any questions, or, Mark?
Not yet. Give us five minutes.
Okay.
Glad to have you.
Uh, first item on the agenda is the Calvin Properties Limited, Deverdam Road Site Plan Review Guidance. Last meeting of the planning board asked for an order of conditions instead of a site plan review. Mr. Glofsky provided us with the conditions that I think the board requested. That approval would be conditioned on compliance with outdoor lighting standards, noise standards, and the proposed project will require fewer than five additional parking spaces. Let's see, the applicants here, any comments?
Nope, nope, unless you guys have.
Any questions to the applicant?
No, I read the, Mr. Glofsky's language. It seems fine.
Any other questions from the board?
I just had a comment. It's just a typo. The point that I was making with our zoning bylaw is that this project does not require more than five parking spaces. Not additional parking, but five parking spaces. So I think he just needs to take out additional. I think we went back and forth with this, and so if the building inspector says this project does not need more than five parking spaces, then it's
Okay.
a go.
Okay, um, we'll do that. Any other comments from the board?
Ron, I have a question. I'm sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand here. Oh, there we go. Did the applicant talk to the fire chief?
I did not talk to the fire chief. I talked to the police chief, but I haven't spoken to the fire chief. I could loop you guys in with whatever props I have with the fire chief. Happens to me.
I couldn't quite hear that you, I think I heard that you did not check, have a chance to check on the fire chief yet. Is that correct?
That's correct. I haven't met with the fire chief yet.
Comment was he would loop us in after he talks to the fire chief.
Yep. I did speak to, not the chief, but a fire person, and everything looks fine, but I haven't spoken to the chief yet. I did speak to the chief's chief.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we had said that we wanted to have the fire chief review, just look at this, to make sure that he didn't think that there was a, um, a problem. So if we can condition our approval of the instructions to Paul Orlando, the advice to Paul Orlando upon hearing from the fire chief through you, Ron, and that you could release that advice to Paul hearing, upon hearing from the fire chief. So I guess that'll make that as a motion to accept the document with the small change Mary suggested on planning board advice to Paul Orlando, subject to the chair hearing back from the fire chief that, that the plan is, meets with his approval.
Do a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify that my change is to strike the word additional parking spaces and have it just be parking spaces. Just clarify what the condition is.
That's fine.
So you're imagining the motion?
Correct.
Now, I think that was Mark's motion with Mary's change.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Solley?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
I didn't really hear much of it, so I think I should just abstain. I don't, if you need me, I'll catch up, but I don't.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
So was it the storage containers?
Yeah.
That's fine. I'll focus.
Okay, so, I guess what you could do is get some, something in writing from the chief to me, and I'll get it through the board and through the board.
I did speak to a number of the fires, and they're very, very familiar with the property. And the access isn't really changing. It's just kind of more the, where the road is now, it's a lot of congestion with storage trailers and containers. It's going to be a big improvement, so. I will certainly speak with the fire chief ASAP. I'll relay his, if you prove, if I could have him just maybe give me some sort of an email or letter saying he
Yeah, so do you, does the board want to conditionally approve this based on positive response from the fire chief?
I thought that's what we did.
I think that was your motion.
Okay. Okay, so, great.
Sounds great. Yeah, I'll take it. All right. Thank you all. We really appreciate it. Take care.
Okay, next item is the A&R on Pine Street and Central Street. We had asked for town council's review of the easement of the A&R. And we got a response positively back that the A&R meets a proper endorsement. Any just, any comments on the town council's narrative? Otherwise, I'll take, Ms. Foley?
It wasn't clear on his narrative. He took a portion of the subdivision definition If you look at the A&R handbook, there's three requirements for an A&R, that it fronts on a public way. The lots on the plan meet the minimum frontage requirements, and vital access exists. I don't think it's in front of us that if it was a non-conforming frontage before, that we're fine with that. I think we look at these two lots and say, does it have the adequate frontage? I don't see that it, it doesn't meet the zoning bylaw frontage in that's the issue still. So I just, I don't know how we circumvent that. I mean, I wish we could. I don't, I, I don't know if town council was answering a different question, but he didn't, unless somebody can explain to me, he didn't seem to answer the questions that were posed that, does this have the adequate frontage? It's, it was non-conforming, and the building inspector confirmed that it's still non-conforming, but that's not the adequate frontage piece.
He says the plan does not decrease frontage for either lot. The requested line of lava would not constitute a subdivision and are properly sought via the A&R endorsement per Mass General on Story 181 paragraph. Ms. Resnick?
I would concur with council's opinion that they're not changing the frontage in any way. The frontage on the side street doesn't count as frontage according to the definition of your zoning bylaw, so legal frontage is not changing. Doesn't meet the definition if you are creating two brand lots, but to adjust some other sidelines of existing lots without affecting that frontage, what council is saying is that it does meet the standard for a four-man endorsement.
I think the question that we, sorry, Ron, you asked a question. So I think the question that we asked him, and it was a question for today and going forward, we wanted legal language to address, because this isn't the first time it's happened, a property, specific language that excludes us or covers us, this is such an echo, with the properties that don't have the adequate frontage. Like, we're still not addressing that question.
Could the audience mute their mics, please?
I think that's what the specific question that we were asking to put in today's file and have it on hand for future cases, but we still don't have an answer to that. And that's not what the A&R process is asking us to do. It's like, check one. I still don't see how we get past the frontage. So until town council answers the question that we agreed to at the last meeting, I'm not sure how we go forward. Because the question that we asked you to ask them wasn't asked.
Well, my mistake if I didn't ask the correct question, but I don't see anything that town council brought up that that would say that this would not, should not be approved, but.
So the question is, what language do we put in there? What, what situations do we exclude insufficient frontage? I mean, if the handbook says you need frontage, give us this legal opinion that we can exclude and not consider frontage when it's, you know, clearly that is a consideration. So in what circumstances are we allowed to ignore frontage? I mean, that's, that's what we need, right? Because this isn't the first time it's happened.
Yeah, essentially, the, the frontage isn't changing, and you're just adjusting some other boundary lines of two existing parcels. If you were creating new parcels, then it wouldn't be entitled to a four-man endorsement for a number of reasons. But whereas it's existing two parcels and you're adjusting some other lines, you can do that. Doesn't mean also that it doesn't, that it complies with other zoning requirements, but it is entitled to a four-man endorsement.
I mean, when you look at the handbook, that's just not in there, right?
Yes, it's not in there.
So I'm asking, and that was the point of the question last time, so it's not that allowance isn't in the A&R handbook, so I feel as, to cover our butts going forward, cover our butts in the past, we need something saying, because town council told us this, we can ignore frontage if it was already existing. We need that. Like this, we're just making up our own rules.
Well, there's, there's a lot of case law.
Well, then they should send us a memo with the case law.
One person speak at a time.
And that's what we asked for, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Creighton?
I think that town council does very clearly say the frontage for Lot 1A is along Pine Street, and the plan does not decrease frontage for either lot. Requested lot line adjustments does not therefore constitute a subdivision. So, and the other, I, I thought about this after, because I was the one who raised the question of access. If this was a division of land without any buildings on it, we could divide it, but it wouldn't comply with zoning. But our job is not to say whether it complies with zoning. That's the building inspector. Our job is to say, does it have access? And I previously had said that there's not access along Pine Street, but there is access along Pine Street, because we have to treat this as a lot without buildings. And so therefore, there's access along Pine Street, which is the frontage. So I disagree with Ms. Delicio. I think the building, the town council has said the plan does not decrease frontage for either lot, and therefore is subject to, is entitled to the A&R endorsement. And I think I was wrong at the last meeting to raise the issue of the access.
My concern, Chairman, is not access. I think we've done plenty of those before. You have to prove that you have frontage, and if the access is somewhere else, that's fine. It can be, you have someone else's property, it can be a shared driveway. That's not the issue. I am looking for a legal, I'm not saying, did you decrease it, increase the frontage? Where is some legal opinion saying that you do not have to have frontage in every situation? That's what I asked for two weeks ago. That's what I'm still asking, because going forward, we have approved of this before. Why can't we just have this legal language from town council that we pay a lot of money to, to say, hey, we've done this before, we have this memo, we do not have to have frontage in this opinion, in all circumstances? That's...
Mr. Chairman. So Christina is correct that the, that the letter from town council doesn't provide a basis for his decision or his recommendation, but he does recommend we approve it.
We didn't ask him. He's not going to give us, he's not going to dive deeper into a problem to bring up another problem. So he's not answering the question that we asked him, that we, that I thought we were getting an answer to.
So he asked a very specific, he answered a very specific question. Should we approve this A&R? And he says yes. Now, the more general question is, so the reason for that is, that's a separate issue that we can ask him going back, but it clearly tells us to approve the A&R, and I think for the reasons that Mark pointed out, which is, we're not, we're not, we're adjusting it to existing laws. We're not creating a new law.
And if it was just that easy, I think they would have supplied us the reason why. I'm just not sure. He answered a part of a question. I'm not sure he answered the whole question. And if there is case law to support it, then why not include this in this email?
Mark, do you know if there's any law on this frontage issue that you can?
I, I am not familiar with, off the top of my head.
Laura?
My basis is what I have in writing in front of me from the town council reviewing what the building inspector has said, which is conforming that the frontage does not decrease the frontage for either lot, and the building inspector's opinion is that it's appropriate for A&R. Town council is reviewing the A&R. He didn't say that he was reviewing one aspect of the A&R. He says he's reviewing the A&R plan and agrees that the requested lot line changes are appropriate. So for me, I feel like I have enough here guidance from town professionals and legal that we can approve it and recommend that we do so.
Are you making a motion to approve?
I was just continuing the discussion. I haven't made a motion yet, but I'm.
Any further discussion, Ms. Solley?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would concur with what Christine has said, and you know, I wish it said in the A&R handbook that, you know, that as long as you're not decreasing non-conforming frontage, you can approve an A&R, or things are grandfathered in, or all these other scenarios that we're hearing, but that is not what the A&R handbook states, and so if we could have case law that says you can approve an A&R with all of these variances, but we don't, and if you just go with the straight facts, even with the easement over the driveway, is that an easement into perpetuity? I mean, I, you know, what if the owner of that lot then says no longer for the easement, then there's this lot behind there that doesn't have access? I guess it could all of a sudden come out of Pine Street, but they don't currently have any access to there, so I just, you know, I, I wish it were that easy, but again, we've got three basic things for A&R, and we're not meeting them. So I'm, I don't have anything that could lead me to a path that says it can be approved.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, I'll take a motion on this A&R and whether we want to approve it or deny it. And then maybe going forward, we could ask, based on what happens on the vote, we could ask this other question going forward on the handbook issue.
So I'll make a motion to endorse the A&R. I don't have the data to, to make the full motion with. Maybe we could use it off of last.
Yeah, Gail, I didn't see the milars downstairs or the plans.
Well, I had requested they be left for you at the meeting table, and I guess someone missed that step. As you know, I'm not in town hall on Monday, so.
I tell you what we do, why don't we do this since we don't have this before us? Why don't we, well, is the clock ticking on this? Like, this has been, this has been.
The clock is ticking, and ask, ask, I'll, I'll let Mark make the decision.
Typically, unless extended by the applicant, it's 21 days, I believe, when it was filed.
Did he, didn't he take it without prejudice, didn't he last week, last meeting?
Did he withdraw it or extend it?
Without prejudice? I'll have to check the minutes.
No, he, he extended, he extended the date. He didn't withdraw without prejudice. It's not a legal, it's an application. It's not a legal process.
Ah, the applicant's on. Are you on, Mr. Parker?
Correct. Yes, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we don't have the documents in front of us. What happened? Do you know?
They were not in my control. They were, should have been presented back to you for this meeting. It was continued to this meeting. I'm very disappointed that you don't have them in front of you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Creighton?
We have them in the packet for the last meeting, so if I could just continue Mr. Almeyne's message, uh, email, I mean, not email, motion to endorse the plan for number one Pine Street and number 41 Central Street, prepared for Jeffrey Parker of 41 Central Street by Hancock Associates,
You accept it?
As in, a lot will require.
Sure, I accept it, I'm sure.
Have we passed the 21 days?
Okay, so you moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Approved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Will we pass the 21 days?
I believe he extended, he also.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Almeyne?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
Ms. Solley?
No.
The chair votes yes. So I will need the milar, Mr. Parker's sign, and the other copies, paper copies. I don't know how, who is responsible, but we'll need to get them here.
I'll track them down tomorrow, and I'll call you. Or signature.
And just as an aside, could you maybe drill down on this question? On the handbook, what it says, and what this grandfather is going forward, if there's some case law?
Yeah.
We'll go on this next time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just from my understanding, Gail will let me know, ready to be picked up, assigned documents?
So, Gail?
As soon as there's a sign, I'll let you know.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sorry, Ron.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is the rules and regulations for driveway entrances, entrances, Article 7. Ms. Creighton had placed in our packet the track changes and the final, what we think is the final, what we expect is the final ruling on these. Sarah, you have any comments on what you've done? You made some changes, dates.
I just made the four changes that we agreed at the last meeting, and I think this is ready to vote. Recall that we voted at June 12th, but this is now significantly ended up. And I'd like to see us just re, re, vote, uh, vote the revised, the January 8th revision.
Okay, is there a motion to vote these changes?
I'll move that the changes be approved and we adopt it as new regulations for driveway entrances.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Foley?
So my, one comment is on line 12. Starts at the end of line 11. It says the DPW shall review and approve all applications for driveway entrance. So I believe that's reading that they're going to review it and prove, and approve all, and I don't think we want to say that. I think we need to say they'll review. I don't think we can given, given that they approve all of them. Am I incorrect?
So these would be applications that come to the DPW. So I guess you could kind of say they can do all the ones that come to them, because the ones that doesn't, that they don't will bump up to us.
But my understanding is they review them, and if it doesn't fit theirs, then they bump it to the planning board.
Yes.
How about?
Right, okay.
One at a time. Chris?
So I was just going to suggest that that we insert language at the end of that sentence, which says that they will review and approve driveway entrances that comply with these regulations.
Yeah, that's fine.
Ms. Tenny?
I, I don't think respectfully that that change needs to be made, because I feel that we've all scrubbed this document a number of times, and that if you say the DPW shall review and approve, the understanding is that they are the approving body, and then it goes on in the document to say that when it doesn't meet those requirements, then the DPW self shall refer it to the planning board if there's an exception, so I think it's clear. And I, and I think the document is needed, and I recommend we put pencils down and approve it.
Any other comments from the board?
I do have other comments, but I will withhold.
Well, you made a motion to approve, correct?
Yes.
And it was seconded. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Almeyne?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
No.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
And the chair votes yes. So now that this is approved, I think we need to work on a final application form.
So it needs a final application form, and it needs a, what's the word? Approval form, like the.
So it's, it needs to go, it, it needs to serve as both for the driveway opening application and the special permit part.
Correct.
So.
A decision. It needs a decision.
So we need to have a checkbox at the top that what it's for, maybe, or something, but we'll, we'll have to come up with something.
And a decision form, right?
Yes, so.
We're on the same form.
So Mary and I will work on that for next week, next meeting. All right. Amendments to General Bylaw Section. Sarah, was that you that put that in? in there? I don't remember writing that.
Yep, um, so now that we've got our regulations, and we've now thought through how the driveway entrances work in the general bylaws, I think we, in the conversation about the regulations, we identified a couple of things that might warrant small amendments to the general bylaws. They include commercial, a designation that, about how commercial driveway, driveways for commercial property are handled, some wiggle room, I think, on the width, particularly around commercials, because we are very stringent. We have 12-foot width with a 5-foot apron. And a, it's my opinion, those are two that we identified. It's also my opinion that we should have some greater discretion about things like the single driveway. Maybe those come to the planning board, we could talk about that. So I don't think we have to talk about it tonight, but I will be prepared at the next meeting to propose some amendments to the general bylaw for town meeting to fix those things that we've identified in this process, if people think that that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we should correct, make those changes. Any disagreeing or have other?
So if anybody wants to make suggestions to the list, other than those things I just identified, which are commercial driveway width and some, a greater discretion about some of the very prescriptive issues, particularly to entrances, send me, why don't you send them to Mark, so we don't have any kind of feeling of debate, and Mark and I can put together the, if that makes sense to you, Mr. Chairman, put together a list of the proposed changes, and I think that's helpful.
Sounds good. When we do that, get the changes to Mr. Resnick, and you guys will put it together for our next meeting, hopefully. And Sarah, any comments on special permits, site plan review, and hiring of consultants?
Sue and I did meet and went through our draft regulation, or I guess in our draft they were approved June 12th, and agree, I think, as Town Council pointed out, that there's a lot of significant redundancy with the zoning and Section 12. And so Sue and I started to kind of edit it, and then stood back and said, do, does Section 12 basically create, have enough guidelines in it to serve the purpose that the regulations were intended to serve? And so that's where we left it, and I think the other piece that was in that section that we were looking at was how to handle the financial accounting and due diligence for third-party consultants reviewing special permits. And I think that's probably governed by state law, so I thought the next step there would be just to talk to the treasurer and find out how she does it, and if there's any need for guidance. So it may be that we don't need anything was, was sort of our initial conclusion, and that we should probably strike most of what was there. So we'll be back in touch with you on that. Does that make sense? Does that summarize what we came up with, Sue?
Sue, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I would add that we started to see how other communities are handling this, and I just started that process, but it's been interesting. Most communities our size handle it in their zoning bylaw, not in additional regulations. So we're continuing to look at that and see how we compare.
Okay.
Well, why don't we try to make a final recommendation about next steps at the next meeting?
That sounds great.
Ron, could, I'm confused. Are they editing the rules and regulations document?
No, you're not editing, you're not editing that. You're just coming up with suggestions, correct?
Well, I think our original charge was that we were going to incorporate the town, Town Council's comments, because they were largely about striking large sections, and give you a track changed version. But when we went to do that, it seemed like there was a larger issue. So you didn't authorize us to create a track change document of the document approved on June 12th.
So of the, so just to be, so you're just looking at the special permit and site plan review sections?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have that document that we can start to look at?
It's in one of the prior meeting packets. I can, I'll, I'll look it up right now, since I'm online, and I'll let you know which.
Oh, I just meant your track changes.
So we haven't done any track changes yet.
Oh.
We, we intended to, but when we sat down to do it, it seemed that once we had incorporated Town Council's recommendations, which were largely strike this, strike that, there wasn't much left. So I'll, I'll send you, I'll, I'll look up where the section is in our meeting packets. It was a couple of meetings ago, so you can look and see if you agree with us.
No, I just, I mean, I recall we had a discussion that you were going to look at that section, and so I'm, I'm just trying to understand where we are now. So if, if it doesn't make sense to try to edit that section, it seems like a total rewrite, perhaps it should come back to the board and we discuss.
That's, I think we agree with you on that.
Okay, so that's, so, so is that the summary of what we just discussed, that we'll have it on next meeting's agenda to look at special permit and site plan review sections? Total rewrite?
Well, I think what we'll do is make recommendations for the next steps. If you are interested in the excerpted site plan and special permit regulations, they were in the packet for December 11th.
All right, so I'm just.
Can you drop them? Go ahead.
Just trying to be prepared. So we should come next meeting with our recommendations for that section. Is that correct?
Well, I think they're, they understand that at first, correct?
We'll make recommendations, but it certainly, having had people look at it, makes sense. In fact, I can move that, copy that material into the next meeting folder.
That's what I was going to suggest. I'll come into there, and then people can make comments at our next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Aquifer overlay district and stormwater management bylaws, so Mary produced, gave us an outline, which is in your packets. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Foley.
So to be fair, I thought the outline was just for the agenda, so that didn't really coincide with them. But I guess it's, it's more kind of, yeah.
Yeah, it's a one-page.
A one-page. The thought process behind this, and it might not be called an aquifer overlay district, it might just be more a watershed protection district, which we have some of that, but that needs expansion, and that with our current water quality issues and issues around gravelly pond and the Lincoln Street well, we should look at having revising our water overlay districts, expanding them, and taking guidance from the Water Task Force document, which is an excellent read, if anybody wants to read that. There's tons of good information in there, and lots of issues that I, I wasn't even aware of before. So to bring a solid aquifer slash something else overlay district bylaw, and then with the stormwater management, there are new proposals out there that are looking at updating their precipitation data, aligning more with the EPA's MS4, and promoting ESSD and LID development. So I don't, it might be good to engage with the DPW, have them at our next meeting, and discuss how they feel about these, and if it makes sense to incorporate into our current stormwater management bylaw, and any other areas with that to look at.
Okay, any comments from the board? I, on the expansion of the overlay district, I think we'll need some professional guidance.
Yes, well, and I noticed that you were on that team, so I thought we could get a little briefing from you, but if not, the, would you like to brief us on that?
I'm not prepared tonight to brief you on that, but I thought maybe some professional guidance also on something like that would be something we need to engage. And, you know, get some kind of guidance on the depth of expansion, and DPW might be involved in that, and then maybe hydrologists, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it depends how, how extensive that report was, whether there was groundwater mapping, and, you know, and some, some more extensive scientific analysis that would help to expand the zone properly, so that encompasses the areas that the town should be concerned about. And if not, then I think additional assistance from the scientific community would be necessary in order to, to properly, you know, prevent that, the current district. And there is a current district.
Yeah, and the, the task force undertook, it appears, a lot of that. They've already mapped out Zone A and Zone B for the watershed with the source of, since 2022, so pretty recently. And, you know, I don't want to step on their toes or anybody else's toes, but it's, you know, that is part of their recommendation, is to extend these areas and to update our current water overlay district bylaw, to follow the updated groundwater and surface water contribution zones that they've discovered in their reporting. So maybe it's getting multiple boards together and looking at this.
You've got to come in and explain.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Creighton? You're on mute. Sarah, we can't hear you.
Sorry. We have a ground and surface water overlay protection district. Mary, are you thinking that this would geographically expand that district, or would geographically expand the district and modify the existing regulations?
It could be all of the above. I think it depends what, some of the specific recommendations that came out of their, the task force findings, and how best as a town to have this. I think there's got to be better provisions around the Lincoln Street well, and then obviously gravelly and over into round pond. So I don't know that our current one is as extensive as it should be. So it's, I guess to answer that, I don't know. I don't know if it's a, in addition to or expanding what we currently have.
It seems to me that's important to know whether we have deficiencies in our regulations of our existing groundwater regulation. I believe that was done, I think, by Horstley and Witten a while ago, and if it's a simply, if it's a matter of geography and additional expand, expanding the boundaries of the district, that seems a lot easier than trying to rewrite the, the rules. And I guess the similar question is around stormwater. We just, just did a stormwater bylaw at the suggestion and request of the DPW. We move, recall, we moved it to the general bylaws from zoning to give it broader applicability, as opposed to just applicability when a building permit or change of use happens. It's now has broader applicability. And the, the input we got and the model, I believe, came from DPW. So we should know what additional things, again, we would want to take up if we were to address the stormwater bylaw, because we literally just, yeah.
So the stormwater bylaw is coming from the Mass DEP. There's actually a public information session tomorrow, if you would like to listen in. So I think these updates come out, you know, somewhat regularly, and though we recently adopted something, these are in addition to with, again, updating the precipitation data that they have now, aligning with the EPA's MS4, and having more sensitive site design. So these are not written in stone yet. They're still taking public comment into March, so this isn't something we would need to adopt right now, but it's something that we should start engaging, I would think, with the DPW, and maybe CONCOM, or, or what other, any other boards that would make sense.
So one of the things in our existing stormwater is reference to federal statutes and state statutes, so hopefully they'll make it easy for us, and just update those so we can, by reference, be current with them. So it'll be good to, to find out if that's how they're doing it.
On the expansion of the overlay district, you said the Lincoln Street well, I thought I heard some proposal to maybe not kind of have that functioning at some point, just as a pumping thing to the treatment plan.
The latest I heard, I think it was Chuck Dan, I think he was updating the Downtown Improvement Committee, so it'd be good if he could come to the planning board and update us, is that they would have water treatment at both the Lincoln Street well and gravelly now.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, they, there wasn't thought to pipe the water down Pleasant Street, but they changed that. So we would have two water treatment facilities. So do you, you know, if, if, personally, I, I think protecting our watershed is one of the highest priorities we should have, protecting our drinking water, and I think it would be a good project for the planning board to pursue.
Okay, I think we'll try to move on that. We've got some stuff on our plate, but maybe we can slowly take this up. I don't think we're going to make it for April.
No, probably not, but maybe if we could have DPW at next meeting, if it's not full, and get some input from there, and if, you know, I'm assuming they've already been reviewing these proposed updates, and get their take on them.
Any other comments from the board on this subject? Okay, thank you. Mary? What plane bylaws, Delicio, where do we stand on that?
I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, but, thanks for that. I just wanted to, so I went back and reviewed the things that we've received so far, and it was initially thought that we were supposed to have the new maps any day now. So I didn't know. Have you been privy to any kind of emails? Have you been able to search to see if there was anything, so?
We were told March of 2025 by the. We were told March of 2025 by the guy that gave us some recent data. That, that's when the maps will be ready.
So I don't think it was March, I think it was summer.
March of 2025?
No, I don't think so.
This summer, you mean?
Yeah. So that we could have the six months to review, so we would need to from May 2025. So we haven't seen any kind of official update from anyone, so I was wondering if you could maybe search emails, and then maybe we can collaborate and pick up where Betsy laid off. So the idea was to just update the floodplain bylaw and then insert the new maps when they came out. But I do think it's an idea that we need to see generally what the maps are going to look like. But I wasn't prepared to be on tonight's meeting, seeing that this came out on Friday.
So our previous planner wrote a, gave us a draft.
Okay.
Back, way back.
There is a, there is a draft, and she based it on not the latest state model. So I think you need to get the latest state model, not version like two, you have to like four or five. So do you, I asked for your resume, I hadn't seen it yet, but I didn't know. Do you have any experience with this?
Years ago, I think I worked on floodplain bylaw. Yeah, well, it's just another.
So.
But I'll find out by the next meeting, I'll try and look for the draft, and I'll try and find out when.
I have a shoot, yeah.
I'll send it to you.
And I'll, we'll try and track down when, I guess, probably February we'll be releasing
We had someone come in and talk to us, right, so.
Well, we ought to know that approximate date, because it could be extended.
At first, we were waiting for the maps to be issued to update the bylaw, but then they said the maps might take longer than expected, so now the plan B is just get the floodplain bylaw updated and then insert maps, so that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Salicio. Now, our favorite subject, the MBTA task force. Can we get an update on that from you and Sue?
Yes. So at our last meeting of the task force, we started looking at various areas of town and applying the compliance model to them to see how much leeway we had in terms of providing sufficient density and unit capacity to meet the requirements of the law. So we've looked at, I don't, probably eight parts of town, and all we're doing really is assuming that you might allow three units per parcel. Does, what was the configuration of parcels within the district, this little area? How many units would that generate? So that's our first run at this. So the consultant's coming back this Thursday. We made some adjustments to some of the areas and took some out because they didn't seem feasible, and we're going to start looking at this again. The second thing that's happened is a subcommittee of the task force has been organized to start putting together design guidelines, and the group has the advice from four local architects, helping to think through what this would look like. The first phase of this is going to be to come up with a statement of what town character is. The second is to decide what aspects of the town enhance town character, and then we can start trying to figure out what design guidelines would enhance the town character based on these aspects of town.
That include like building materials?
Sure, so.
Styles?
So let me give you an example. One way of looking at this is Nantucket, where everything is gray shingles and white trim. That is not Manchester. Another way of looking at this is, do we have the kind of a thing like Rand Tool Street with a big, straight, wide shot downtown where you can put bigger buildings? No, we don't. We have very narrow, constricted roads, which are much more conducive to a variety of building types at much smaller scale. And so that's where we're headed with this, with these design guidelines.
Ms. Danny?
I, that's a great update. I'm really glad to hear that local architects are working with you, and I think the massing studies for, you know, how big is the building, how tall, what, how much articulation? I know that this is not a design of a building, but, you know, what sort of articulation is there, and the, you know, variety of group lines, or how are the buildings getting together, are they a little bit set apart? Those kinds of things, I think with some visualizations would really help illustrate.
That's true. The tricky part, though, is that if we said everyone has to have a pitched roof, that would not be typical of Manchester.
No, I mean, you might do some different models of it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's a pitched roof, it's a flat roof, some, some variety, I think, is what you're trying to communicate, and how it's.
It's a variety of buildings and how they relate to each other.
Yeah. What's the setback, I think, is important.
Yeah.
So I think that would be really useful.
Any questions?
So how enforceable are these design guidelines? From what I read from the state is that we can spend the time doing design guidelines, but if it restricts any development, that they're not enforceable. So could you go over how enforceable they are?
Sure, so that was a big discussion at the subcommittee. Should they be mandatory, and how much, how, how much mandatory can we enforce? Or should they just be really good suggestions that developers will say, well, if I want to get a speedy approval, I should do what they want to do? So somewhere in between, it's probably going to be a combination of the two. Probably the mechanism for enforcing this is to amend the zoning bylaw for site plan review, which larger projects will all fall under. And under one of the criteria for site plan review or performance standards is aesthetics, and so this would probably fit into there. So what we could say is for MBTA zoning districts, these special laws or guidelines will be required by the planning board. And then we'll push it as far as we can until somebody says, no, that's too far, and then I guess we'll back off. But we'll do, we'll make it as, you know, one of the things we could say is, three stories is the maximum, or this is a height restriction, that's perfectly fine. And we can say what the setbacks are, that's perfectly fine. And as long as we don't make unreasonable design requirements that are unaffordable by developers, we can get away with quite a bit. For example, we can require clapboards or, or divided windows, because they're not going to make a project feasible or infeasible.
Ms. Danny?
Yeah, if I may just continue that. I think, you know, having design guidelines that focus on the massing and the scale and the setback, I wouldn't characterize that only as aesthetics. I think it really is about urban form and scale. And I hope the board will consider how much you get into, you know, divided lights and clavers and materials that really are aesthetic choices, that maybe you want to give some more freedom and variety, because, you know, different architects and different people like to do different things. I would also love to hear from Mark, if you have experience with other towns and using design guidelines, and how you actually kind of weave them in so that they are not just a suggestion. Again, not so much on materials, but on a kind of urban scale and form.
So several towns we've incorporated into site plan review design guidelines, and however, they aren't as extensive as you might find. One of the villages, Barnstable, and I think that's the one I was thinking of, has a very thick design guideline. Any of them have lots of pictures and examples of things that, the ones that I've written are a little simpler, they require New England building materials and it lays out wood, plastic shingles, you know, and same thing with roof designs, and that, you know, needs to be of New England style and character, so you're giving the architect some flexibility in proposing something. And then there's language in there that gives the planning board a lot of authority to agree, disagree, modify it as such, to, to the point where it's acceptable to a range of people in the community. So, so that's how I've written them in the past, but there are a number of examples from, like you mentioned, Nantucket, where it's very rigid of you are going to be doing these types of designs, to other communities where it's a broad-based design guideline book, but very, very detailed, so. And I think as we kind of move forward with the process, with the committee, probably, I'm guessing, find some sort of balance there, where it's, you know, closer towards something with lots of examples, given the number of professional architects on the, on the committee. But I hope that it provides some flexibility, where if you were looking at multiple areas, that you might get different design styles. In this MBTA, you might get, you know, a federalist, in this one, you might get some other style, historic style, colonial style buildings, but they're historic and what you might find elsewhere in Manchester.
Ms. Salicio?
So when you say height setbacks, you're talking about for the new overlay districts specifically? I guess why would they be any different than what we have?
They may not be.
Okay, and then the next question is, how are those, how do we marry the strict adherence to these guidelines on that one end with our new able-to opt-out of, you know, or, you can just say no to any of the above if you want to. I guess that's my concern. I'm not using the right words, it's not coming to me right now, you know.
When you say opt-out, do you mean for developer opting in?
I'm, like, our, something new in our site plan review is, well, we don't have to consider this, we can ignore, the planning board doesn't.
Oh, we can waive.
There we go, thank you. Planning board can waive anything. So my concern is, you say, okay, we're trying to get this to be as strictly adhered to as possible, but over here, we said, oh, we can waive anything. So they don't seem, they seem to be in opposition to each other at this point.
Wouldn't that apply to special permits, where these are as right, by right developments? So a design guideline should apply to by right as, as well, right? So there isn't a question of waiving it or not?
Yeah, well, I think we would be looking to incorporate it into the site plan review bylaw, but also be looking at changing much of the language of the site plan review bylaw to, to give you, the whole planning board, some flexibility when you are reviewing these projects, but give you the authority to push back on a design that you feel is inappropriate. Someone comes in with a stuck-up building with red tile roofs, you know, you know, you can say no, so.
Sarah, Harry. Sarah, did you have your hand up?
I did. I, I'm going to hold on that, I might be back.
Just clarity, are you saying change site plan review bylaw in general, or just for the state overlay district stuff?
Well, I think there may be, for it to work well with the state overlay district, we may need to make some additional changes to the bylaw itself. And then I think whether we do it all at once or separately, we may want to look as, at the planning board, at those regulations, whether there's other things that you may want, who are just looking forward.
With the site plan, but.
Can I just?
So we just, we just.
That's, that's two separate things.
Yeah, we just adopted a site plan bylaw, and you're saying we should change it?
Well, I don't know when.
I'm just, he just, oh, let me just do it.
Okay.
We may have, go ahead.
But, yeah, but still, the answer might be yes, because with these overlay districts we're going to be creating are going to be less than 5% of the land in Manchester. So we're not rezoning the whole town. But there may be parts of the town, we may want more site plan review. For example, we're probably not going to be creating new MBATA districts in the downtown, right in the downtown, because we can't mandate mixed use, we can't mandate retail on the first floor. So if we include those areas in the MBTA district, they might become all residential. We don't want that to happen. But we may want to have site plan review, more strict site plan review for these downtown projects to preserve the character of the downtown. So this could be a place where we could actually offer more protection to the downtown than currently exists.
Oh, so you're not looking, not looking downtown?
Well, we haven't really, we haven't picked any districts yet, but we're worried about picking mixed-use districts for that reason. We don't want to zone Crosby's for residential use.
So there's a couple of things, Chris, that you said that kind of piqued my interest. I did listen to the Emily presentation a few times, it's really hard to listen to. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we just can't get a speaker for these, some of these meetings, it's, the sound is horrible. But one specific comment, and I think that just brings back my larger point, I do think it's time that the planning board as a whole is involved in some of these conversations, because otherwise, we're going to go so far down, and I said, I feel like the, you said about the subcommittee of a subcommittee defining town character, I feel like that is the planning board's job. I feel like a lot of these things are being taken out and just coming back to us, and I don't know, maybe you want us to rubber stamp. But one specific area that I was listening to the meeting was the Raymond Street area.
Raymond Street?
The Raymond Street.
Oh, Raymond Street, yeah.
So when you look at, and I feel like this is, we should have this conversation, and we should have this conversation when everyone's ready to have the conversation, but that one specifically, lots of flooding, no sewer, no water service, right? So we did the same thing for cell signaling and the LCD, it's not insurmountable. And in our water, our CMWP report basically says, we need to provide that area with water and sewer because of flooding, and that needs to save capacity. So I feel like we might need to have a bigger holistic conversation, that could be the reason to include it, because it does need sewer, and if someone wants to develop it, it would bring a reason, just as we had a reason to bring water and sewer over to cell signaling. So I feel like we're the people in the room that have, you know, the expertise on this, and some of the other people may not. So I don't feel like we should be dismissing some of these areas right off the bat without having a whole conversation with the whole board.
Well, we're nowhere near to picking the zoning districts yet, that's.
Well, I mean, based on that meeting, it was like, Emily was like, all right, can we just cross off these areas?
Well, we were just, we're just testing them to see if it's, they're even feasible to work with based on the configuration of parcels. We don't want to pick an area where they're, you know, they're all 20-acre parcels, and if we limit those developers to three units, we're not going to get the capacity we need to show the state. That's all we're doing at this stage.
But I guess from that meeting, is the Raymond lot off the table? Like, that's, that's a concern.
Yeah, but I mean, there are a bunch of them that are off the table, they come, well, they will come back when we get further into it. I, I don't want people to start thinking that we're, I think the newspaper the last week said we're zeroing in, that's not what's happening here.
Like I said, I listened to the meeting twice, and it was difficult to understand, and I guess I'm trying to feel for what we are going to be presented with, because I actually, you know, at first glance, I think that area should be included for this, I mean, the same reason that it could have water and sewer, and it would present an avenue to decrease, you know, black and white beach from contamination of, you know, septic systems that are not performing as they should. So for me, that's a reason to include an area, which is that.
Okay. Well, to your larger point, yes, it is time we start engaging with you. Absolutely. We don't want to come to you with something that looks like it's a finished project, product.
And the other question I have, just big picture, is the housing authority sites. Can you explain how we can create, how we can include those?
I can try. So the minimum lot size for a district is five acres. So if we, and there, you can have districts and sub-districts. So one possibility, and this is just a possibility, is to include Newport Park with a district that includes Elm Street and Morse Court. that includes Elm Street and Morse Court and all that dense housing, then goes down the far side of Pine Street, and then pops across to include Newport Park. Or maybe we could somehow find five acres adjacent to Newport Park.
So here's my, it's even higher level than that. So if those lots, if the housing authorities are de-restricted on the SHI, how do we, I mean, they're de-restricted for senior housing and disabled.
Yeah.
How do we then now address the deed?
Zoning doesn't address deeds.
If it could never be multifamily.
Well, it can be multifamily, but if the deed restriction says it has to be for seniors.
Well, that's my question, is on, you're on the senior, I mean, you're on all those, so is, is it?
It is.
So do we have to address the deed?
So the state has to address the deed, yes. So, I mean, we can get into a big picture here about what the state has to do to make these projects work, and there is a ton of money now in this, theoretically, that the state's going to be offering to redevelop these public housing projects.
So it's not excluded?
Not excluded.
From what I was listening to, it's similar to the educational land that maybe, to change the purpose of it somehow?
Yes, that's right. But in this case, just because it's limited to seniors, doesn't mean it can't be multifamily.
How?
Because you could have multifamily senior housing.
It's suitable for families with children.
Well.
No, I'm really trying to understand how you're including them, that's, no, I mean, I'm just a genuine, genuine question.
So, no, so we can include them, and the fact is that because the state has got a deed restriction on them, they're gonna have to be seniors.
New units.
Unless the state decides to waive the deed restrictions, which is possible.
I guess I'll, I'm confused too. How can you have deed restricted for seniors, but it be multifamily?
Well, that's what's there now.
It's multifamily?
Yeah.
Suitable with?
Multifamily just means you have three, three units on a single building.
Right, 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 but, okay, multifamily per the state overlay.
So there's nothing in the, in the MBTA zoning mandate that says you cannot have senior multifamily housing? That's certain, it's allowable, certainly allowable. If some developer wanted to come in and build all just seniors by right, they could do it.
Really?
Sure.
Well, they could in an overlay district, but then you'd also say it has to, you have to allow for multifamily.
We can't require it as part of the zoning, but we can certainly allow it.
Right. But if on those sites, you don't allow multifamily suitable for children, how does that work?
How does that work?
So currently, if, say Newport Park, you couldn't go in and build multifamily housing suitable for families with children, correct?
Correct.
How can you now, if you draw a big circle around it?
A big circle would include it and a bunch of other parcels that aren't deed restricted.
But how do you include it if it is deed restricted?
You include it. Just include it, what can they say?
Okay, so that on that land, you can't, all you can build is senior housing, you can't build multifamily housing.
You can build multifamily housing, but it has to be restricted to seniors. Multifamily and seniors are not mutually exclusive.
I get that part, but it's the multifamily housing suitable for children, yeah.
So you can build the multifamily on a senior property, but you can't, you'd have to exclude children.
So you can exclude children there?
You can, if it's, yeah, if there's a deed restriction, essentially.
I don't think that's in the spirit of the law, I think that's actually.
Well, there's a lot of things in the spirit of the law that are wacky.
So has Emily given an opinion on that?
I haven't asked her, but I can, if you like.
I'm sure there's tons of conversations going back and forth, asking questions here and there, but, I mean, that to me just seems, it's a quasi-government land, right? So it should be in that excluded. So I'm curious how we are including it, especially seeing as it has some kind of a senior.
Well, just for the record, we're not including it yet. Nothing is included yet.
I mean, the maps have it as identified as a potential lot, correct?
Sure, yes, that's correct.
So my question is just, there's three parcels like that, so I'm just curious how that, so does loading place, have we looked at that loading place would be, I mean, not even though, or looking over, I'm just using it as an example so I understand it.
Sure.
So loading place does have.
Families.
Families, so that would be more in keeping with the spirit of the law versus?
Sure. It wouldn't be probably a good idea for more, much more.
Correct, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. And here's another example, the Plains, the Plains has about two and a half acres, I think, of land, maybe three acres. If there were another piece of land adjacent to it that had brought it all up to five acres, the parcel of land that's not deed restricted for seniors could become multifamily for something else.
Well, the land behind it, that's being looked at.
Sure, yeah.
So if they tore down one of the buildings in any of the, either Newport Park or the Plains, and added a story, kept the existing units, like, so if they did a tear down and built more, would, would they comply if X amount were multifamily, I'm not using family, housing suitable for families with children?
So under the MBTA law, it's not the number of units that you produce, it's the number of units that are, the capacity.
I understand, but my point is, say the building is five units right now, if you tore it down, and you still had the five, because you can't get rid of the deed restrictions, right? You still need the senior housing that's there, we can't eliminate it. You still have to build back the five that you're tearing down. But my question is, could you keep those and then add whatever the density is for them, I don't want to say multifamily, because we're confusing those two, we're housing suitable for families with children. Does that make sense?
Could you do it? If the state changed their policy, yes, you could do it.
What policy?
Well, there's a deed restriction, says it only, can only be for senior housing. But here's the thing, all the second-floor units in that senior housing property are on the second-floor walk-ups. They don't comply with codes for seniors. So maybe the state will say, build a bunch of new senior first-floor units or in a, in a building with an elevator, and then the rest of them, those second-floor walk-ups can be for somebody else, not seniors. We'll have, you know, who knows? It's gonna take some while to figure this all out.
All right, well, you're not at that point yet, so.
No, we're not at that point yet. But I have one more, I have one more thing, though, for the, where we need to engage right away, we think. We would like to have a forum on zoning in general, sponsored by the planning board, that the MBTA task force would help with, just to educate Manchester residents as to what zoning is, because we're finding out that a lot of people don't even know what zoning is and what it does, and, and what the rules are, and what zone they even live in. So we'd like to have a one-day, Saturday morning, something at the high school, and like what we did with the master planner with our zoning re-codification, and just have people come in and talk to them and answer their questions.
And so the task force has proposed March 2nd as the date. So I think we're under the guns to get this out of the way and done, so.
Gloucester did one week or so ago, if you need.
What did they, oh, they're, they're.
What did I do?
Gloucester did one. Well, I'll get in touch with Gloucester and see how they did it.
I think it was that Housing For All.
Okay, that's good, thank you, Christina.
I'm willing to be the sort of, I mean, Chris is on the task force, but I'm willing to be a planning board member that helps out with this, I'm available that day.
I think it's all the planning board, isn't it?
The whole planning board.
Yeah, I'd like to be, I'd like to be.
Planning, yeah. Planning for the planning events.
Play, yeah, planning, there is some planning that's needed. I know Sue and I would be happy to work on it, and Sarah, if you'd help us, that'd be great. Anyone else, too?
I think Saturdays, we keep hearing that these are not great times, is there?
Well, we're flexible.
I think a weeknight is easier than kids and activities, I feel like we're just attract the same crowd. So if we did it on a Saturday morning before, maybe we should do it on an evening this time, just maybe balance out.
Happy to try it, we, maybe we do two of them, I don't know.
That's what I was thinking, the other thing is maybe, I do think that we need to give this information in a digital format, just maybe have somebody put a camera up and video it and post it later, it doesn't have to be that you, I mean, just people are never, not going to be able to please people and make everyone's schedules accommodating, but I do feel like this is important, it should be available to more people to watch later.
We absolutely agree.
Emily mentioned that as well.
Well, you envisioned this as a storyboard in different, in different, well, you've given it out of nature, a, exactly what you're envisioning.
I think that's what we need to figure out, what's the best way to do with this.
I thought the storyboard was more impersonal and more, people could ask specific questions.
But I feel like this is a problem, in my opinion, with some of these presentations, you go to one board, you get one answer, and I did listen to a meeting where Sarah Malish was like, we all need the same talking points, and I feel like to eliminate that, it should be somewhere that has a great presentation space, give the same presentation, and let people ask.
Ask questions, yeah.
And give them back, and everyone can hear the questions, and everyone can hear the answers. I'm not a big fan of the storyboards, I feel like what I've heard is like, that's, I didn't get the same answer as this next person. So everyone in the room, and it's being filmed, all has the same questions, everyone hears the same answers, everyone's on the same page.
So this could be a logistics thing, but you were thinking of the high school?
Yeah, I thought the high school auditorium or the cafeteria or something.
Cafeteria is terrible.
Auditorium?
Auditorium.
Okay.
The acoustics in there are terrible. And I don't think they have the AVs. I think even the library might be a better place than the cafeteria. The high school library has the pull-down screens and the AV equipment all set up.
Okay.
So if the auditorium's not available, I think the library.
So we would, if we wanted to tape it, we would need to figure that out with the town.
Yeah, I'll talk to Tiffany about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Sarah?
I think the, I was very much in favor of Chris's original idea, which is more of, I think it can really work well as a drop-in, so people who are busy between 10 and 11 can drop in at 11 and, and stay for as long as they want. I think at this stage, where this is an information where we want to give people what is zoning, where's their current house, what's allowed, what's, what does this mean? And at least that's what I'm understanding. And I think that's a dialogue with folks, if we want to try to tape the short presentation that, that is given to, here's how you find out where your house is, and put that up on the web, that would be a great idea. But I think the drop-in format for this point in our process is excellent, and if we have it as a question and answer, the real risk is that people only get, you know, the two minutes to, and they'll, they'll grandstand without getting that dialogue that I think is so important and has proven to be very effective. So I think the cafeteria or some similar space is fine, and that that was the, that was the task force's original recommendation, and I wholeheartedly endorse that over a Q&amp;A sort of staged presentation kind of format. And certainly could figure out ways to do informal video vignettes, if, if that's possible. Maybe get a student who's into video, videography or something to, to tape stuff for us and put it up on the web, I think it doesn't need to be highly produced, but I think the intent is to, to meet people one-on-one and help them understand, not, understand zoning, that was the original intent.
Ms. Philbrook?
I agree with what Sarah said, and that was, is the intent of the forum. And I also feel strongly that Saturday morning is worth trying. We've had things in the evening, you know, people are busy. Saturday morning seems to work best. We've had the biggest turnout for things on Saturday morning. Our thought with having it over at the high school was perhaps the younger people who, they certainly don't show up in the evening because they're way too busy, they might be able to drop in for a little bit in, on a Saturday morning. But, you know, there's no perfect time to meet and engage with all the stakeholders that need to be educated about zoning and about the MBTA law. We're just trying as many things as we can. Obviously, we want to make this as good as we can, but I think Saturday morning works, having it informal works, having the drop-in, and keeping it simple. Those are things that seem to work best, we get the best feedback on that, and people really become engaged and educated on zoning.
Ms. Penny?
Christina has some good points about a digital format in that, you know, you might consider going toward a multi-platform, so if you were to, maybe, it, storyboards is what the task force thinks they want to do, or even if you're in the cafeteria up in front of a slide, I agree the AVs, like the, if you're trying to present anything digitally in there, the acoustics are horrible, and you can't really hear, and so rather than, you know, maybe you do a combination of things, if, if the task force feels like, we really want to be, you know, engaged in an informal conversation in person with storyboards, then maybe ahead of that, or you post it ahead and you, and you keep it up there, you do a little tutorial, that's a digital thing, not, not somebody being taped, giving a presentation, but, you know, like one of these little prezi things where you have 10 slides and somebody's speaking over it and saying, do you want to know what district you're in? You know, here's an example of like, here's the zoning map, and here's, somebody, here's my house right here in District C, or, you know, whatever it might be, and you could, I apologize if this was like, maybe not where you're going with it, but I thought you made some good points about the digital platform, because the more we can be in different kinds of platform and meet people, Saturday's not good for you, you know, whatever it might be, then maybe you can kind of get the message out ahead of time, like, if you want to learn more in person, come to our forum, but also, if somebody's never going to come to it, then maybe they get the five-minute online tutorial that doesn't try to take the live presentation, but just as a voiceover of a very, you know, succinct zoning slide tutorial. But again, as like conversational, and, you know, we just produce it in-house kind of a thing.
I have one comment on that. I really do feel strongly about one presentation to a group and then maybe breaking off of storyboards, you know, here's Zone A, B, C, D, but everyone getting the same information, and then everyone getting the same general answers to questions to begin with, and then maybe break out and have some more intimate conversations. But I really do feel, when we've done this, the feedback that I've received is that there's different questions to the same, different answers to the same question. So maybe you walk in, you have a question in a box, we pull them out, have a list, consolidate them, and then if you have another question, you can, you know, ask them one, one-on-one later. But I do think it's important for the same information, and everyone to hear the same information at the same time.
So I think we'll get into a consensus that we have a little hybrid thing, some kind of lecture, and then break into these breakout sessions. I think, I think we were in agreement there.
Took the words right out of my mouth. I was gonna say, and I think it's, we've come around to this, of doing a hybrid, of having a presentation, we don't have that many zoning districts, I think we can quickly go over, or whoever quickly goes over what the zoning districts are, what can happen in there, but the setbacks, lot requirements, et cetera, and then break out into smaller groups.
Maybe the breakout groups are different districts.
Right.
So you go to District A, because that's where your house is, you can worry about that, and go to District B, if that's where your house is.
Exactly. So, so have a hybrid of that, and I would also say, any good outreach program that you really want to get a diverse group of the community is you don't have all of your events at the same time. So I would advocate for not, again, a Saturday morning, but a, an evening, and see maybe if you get a different crowd, which would be nice.
So, you know, the thing about the evening, it's cold now, it's dark, I don't know, people are going to be motivated to leave their house, but it's something to think about, and.
So just a couple on that idea, so if.
Oh, God.
High school students, you must be bothering me, seriously, right? If there's something going on at the high school specifically, it would encourage. If there's something going on at the high school specifically, it would encourage. I mean, obviously if there was some kind of theater, we wouldn't be able to use the auditorium, but you may get parents waiting for. Practices to be done or over with. So, I mean, you might capture a different crowd during the night at the high school. Good point.
So thoughts, maybe two, two events?
Maybe two.
Maybe an evening event.
Gail have an opinion on it?
I don't know. A lot of energy. But. So. Trying to get where the consensus is on the board here. And I'm thinking that, um, we've decided that we'll have some sort of lecture and then a storyboard session, breakout session. But whether to do it on an evening or a Saturday, that's in question. And it sounds like several members prefer the Saturday and several members prefer the evening.
Why don't we, at the next meeting, we'll come back with a more, a much more organized proposal for the board to consider?
The task force.
We're, uh, those of us who are gonna be working on it. Uh, do we, you wanna call it a subcommittee? Do we authorize a subcommittee to plan this thing?
Okay, so the planning board is gonna come back to the, a subcommittee of the planning board is gonna come back to us.
Yeah.
Does that give us enough time? Now that's, uh, you're talking February 16th. Three weeks.
I'll be on the subcommittee.
Okay. Volunteers for the subcommittee?
I mean, when do you guys meet again?
The task force meets on Thursday.
So why don't we just, it's a week later. Just bring it back. It's only a few days after our next meeting, right?
He's talking about having a planning board subcommittee.
A new subcommittee.
Not task force.
I understand. I just don't think it's, I mean, if we can agree at the next meeting, I don't know if we really need a subcommittee on it. That's.
Oh, well, okay, tell you what. I'll come back to the planning board with a proposal at the next meeting. How about that?
Laura. I was not volunteering. I was gonna suggest that the task force take it back. You've heard our input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And come back to us. I don't think it needs to be a subcommittee.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question on that, since we're on the MBTA? Um, so. Part of the action plan was that we were gonna be meeting regularly with the task force and we have to date, never met with the task force.
So I discussed that with Chris. They're not ready, I don't think, to meet with us.
No, we're not ready yet, but we wanna engage with you. Yeah.
So I think that, you know, as we were just discussing, um, or you guys were discussing earlier that. And you sent some of the maps. Thank you. That perhaps the planning board sees all of the areas that. Um, Emily has proposed and we have some discussion on it or, um. You know, some of the, the good points and the bad points. I just, I feel very in the dark. I know it's supposed to be a little more intertwined and we haven't had any. Task force was formed in the summer and, um. Our regular meetings aren't quite regular, so, um.
So they are, they are supposed to come up with a plan, present to us, and then we're supposed to, um.
Well, I think they're supposed to come up with, well, I know what it's supposed to.
It's up to them. I mean, it's, they kinda, it's not a planning board task un- until it comes to us.
Right, they have to do, you know, if we comply, this is, these are some options. If we don't comply, this is the. Status of things and if there's a hybrid of that or whatever it is, but, um. You know, if, if, what do we say? Does the state need it ninety days ahead of time?
Yes.
So if it's November town meeting, so then they need it, you know, I'm just saying like, we would need something final. Pretty soon. And so we're not gonna have a whole lot of vetting time if we don't start engaging. This stuff.
I have a question.
Well, I don't think they're wrong, but, uh, what are we gonna engage with? They're not ready with anything. Then it would be like us.
Well, you follow, I've been following some other communities and what happens is whatever they call theirselves or task force or, you know, whatever. They do the work. They say, hey, here's the twenty areas. You guys have to jigger how it's gonna work. It's not the subcommittee that jiggers it. It comes to the planning board and then they have the conversation and they, I mean, this has been Winchester. I mean, this is. That's the way other communities have done it. So I feel like if we don't have any. Conversation about it, we're just rubber stamping it and we're really not.
I don't believe that, but.
You don't believe what?
That will be rubber stamping whatever they bring to us.
So my question was, is it just possible to get a bigger room at the next meeting?
If the planning board liked to invite the task force to his next meeting, the task force would come.
Or vice versa. Should we post it as the planning board is welcome to participate and go to the next one?
You're always welcome.
No, I understand that. But if we don't post it as a joint meeting and we show up, it might just be. Not, I know the last one, they asked Mary to look at some maps, but I think it needs to be more deliberate than.
My own opinion right now is if we did it right now, it would be so chaotic because we don't really have anything to tell you, really.
Sarah, do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I think that, um, the reason we have a task force is that this is a complex problem. And, uh, with complicated solutions and the task force is working. Really hard and in the weeds on all this stuff. And we are well, the planning board is well represented on the task force. And task force meetings are open to the public. So certainly any of us who want to understand what's going on can go to the task force meetings, but. Um, to ask task force to come out another night and, and hash through everything with us right now seems to be. Um, not a good use of everybody's time. And we need to have confidence, at least, um. In the, in the task force. Um, and I know that may not be a shared sentiment, but I for one have, um, a lot of. Appreciation and confidence that they're working hard and are gonna, uh, come up with some options, um, and that they will have. Um, a reasoned, um, way of recommending them based in the understanding of the requirements. And so I think we should let the process take its, um. Uh, you know, have confidence in the task force that they're moving ahead and that they'll come. That they're working as fast as they can and that we can participate by going to their meetings. I don't think we right now need a joint meeting. I think that's, we have a lot on our plate in the next.
I don't think anyone suggested that.
So I think, um, that's my opinion. Um, and I think the, uh, the, the Christina's had plenty of opportunity to. Give her counter opinion, but I, I just wanted to say that.
Um, what I, what I said was that, um, on the action plan, we are slated to meet regularly with the task force. And so I, I do hope as a planning board, we can. Have that going forward and we abide by the action plan.
Well, when they're ready, I, I mean, I've been asking Chris when, you know, to schedule something, but they're not ready yet. And I kind of agree, it'll be chaotic. We just, you know. Sit there and, uh. You know, see what they come up with.
Yes, yes. And I, I mean, I, I agree with that and I, I do stay engaged. It's, it's hard. They have, between all their subcommittees and sub-subcommittees, they have. Six meetings a week, so it's hard to go to all of them, but we try.
One thing I did, um, I think I mentioned this to Mark earlier today, um. The consultant has a fifty thousand dollar pile of money. And I'm hoping that there would be some. Some of her, um, availability would be, money would be left for when the planning board actually gets this, because I think. It would be good to have her here when we get this eventually.
Yeah.
So everything gets, you know, if she's not available, it's gonna be a little annoying.
Yeah, gotcha.
So I would go, you know, but, you know, I know you, you need her, but I, I would think we need to, or maybe there's some other way to fund. Fund her going forward to the board.
Yes, I, I spoke, I spoke with Greg today and, uh. The contract with, uh, the consultant is supposed to continue on through the zoning process with the planning board.
Oh, good.
Again, pending, you know, the, uh, the time with the sub, with the MBTA committee doesn't extend into. An excessive amount of hours. And so I'd be, my second week, I don't know how many, how many meetings she's been, how much time she's spent, but. I'll kinda get up to speed on that in the next week and, and I'll be speaking with her as well as, um. Kinda looking at the scope of work that was laid out in the contract. So we'll have more and more information coming up.
Great, thank you. And then I do think to everyone's point is that we need to draft some kind of schedule going forward as to when. You know, if we count back from all this time, you know, from when it's gotta be submitted and the periods of time, public hearings, all this business. You know, we gotta have some kind of.
Sure.
Because we're in the year now where, you know, eleven months left.
Well, there is an MBTA schedule that's on the website that gets updated.
So the one I looked at didn't look like it was updated, but I looked at it a couple of weeks ago.
I know, well, it gets updated every week.
Okay, so it's on, there's something on there, but does it have the planning board section in it? You know, does it have that, you know, that would pass?
Uh, not yet, because we're, we're not ready to set a date for it yet. But yes.
All right, Susan.
So I, uh, just wanted to respond or actually ask a question on something. Christina, you were commenting on the Raymond Street parcel. Um, I know that was a few minutes ago, but. There was such extreme flooding down there recently. And I know there've been a lot, there's been a lot of attention to flooding. Um, by residents. There's a lot of concern about flooding, um, a lot of photos of flooding, um. Everywhere in town after the last storm. And I just wonder how. The risk of flooding fits with including that as a parcel, thinking that it might, we might extend infrastructure down there. Um, to me, that doesn't fit together, but tell me what you were thinking, how that would work.
I believe I did explain that. The wastewater treatment facility recommends that water and sewer be brought out to that area. It doesn't have that there. Black and white beaches continually. Has high contamination levels at the beaches. Bringing infrastructure down there would eliminate that. Elm Street is flooded. There's plenty of other towns that are being considered that flooded in the last storm. So. I think there's task force, I believe that they're doing a good job. I just don't know if they have. And maybe you haven't read. CMWP report and know the, the needs of Raymond Street, but, um, perhaps the task force should. Take a look at it and come back and say why it shouldn't be included.
I guess I'm not sure how much credibility we'll have if we're recommending parcels that, um, include. Wetlands and, um. Have been subject to extreme flooding, um, where it gets worse and worse. Um, I ju, I just, I feel like there will be a credibility problem with the state. Um, so I, I have concerns about including Raymond Street for those reasons.
Can I ask, I want Chris and Sue, and that is, um, to take Christina's logic, which I, I can kind of see, is the, um. Is there a strategy? I think Christina's saying that there's a strategy to increase, um. To make, um, higher density areas in areas that need infrastructure in order to drive investment in infrastructure. Um, where you can also, the, whether or not Raymond Street or any other area that needs infrastructure. Needs infrastructure seems to me to be independent. There, the need for the infrastructure should, you know, is, is there. But is the MBTA zoning district the way to drive investment to that infrastructure? Or is it opposite, that, that we should be looking for areas that don't need that infrastructure? Have we received any guidance on that question?
And I think we need some guidance on that question, but. If infrastructure, if we put new infrastructure down there and we increase density, um, and we still have flooding, I, I just. To me, there are many components to it.
So I, so are we, are we not zoning for it downtown then because of flooding? I saw big areas downtown with.
No, we're trying to avoid the flood areas.
Okay, so, so most of it's gonna be more away from downtown?
Well, again, we haven't, so one of the things the planning board members could do right now, which would be helpful to the task force. We have established guiding principles for establishing these zoning districts. And I'd ask all board members to go to the website, look at those. If you disagree with them, let's, let's have that discussion now. Because that's where we're gonna be basing the decisions, what the districts are gonna be.
Yeah, I think, and I've read them. I, it, I think it's just, um, again, not having anything in front that we're reviewing, but it's important to be consistent, because I know. That there was an area, um, Mascanomo area that was removed. Because they felt like the parcels were big and development would actually happen. But then potentially having a big overlay in the LCD. The development would definitely happen. So. You have to be consistent in all the decisions and, and, you know, and that's a tough spot. It's a tough spot for the task force to be in, but, um. You know, it, it, the guiding principles would have to be for all areas. Equally, um, as, as can be. So I think that's, that's hard.
Okay, I think we had a task force meeting tonight, so, uh, we can move on. Um. All right, thank you. Good, good conversation. Good for you guys to consider. Um, just moving on to cell signaling technologies, um. Just an update, the, um, Gail informs me that the application, uh, for special permit is in. Uh, I think they made ten copies. Gail says it's four inches high. So it's, it's quite cumbersome. Um, I don't know if Gail's still on, but, um, you know. At some point, it'll be distributed to us, I think, boxes or something or be.
Should it come in a digital file?
Excuse me?
It is, it is in a digital file. Um, I'm not sure that, it's, it's a very large file. Um, each application is nearly two reams of paper. Um, so. It's going to take a while for us to assemble the application. We're going to try to. Bind the areas of the application that you'll be reading most often, so you can turn pages. Um. I'm not sure if we've been able to post the digital file. I think we may need to break up the application into sections. And post PDFs of the sections. Um, I, I'm going to need to check with someone else. I'm not. That. Acute at, uh. What to do with a large zip file. So, um, we have the application. It really needs to be assembled. It needs to be, um. And then we need to figure out exactly how we're going to, uh, we are gonna put them in boxes because, um. It's eight hundred plus papers. You're gonna be dragging around two reams of paper. Um, so it's, it's big.
So isn't it the applicant's responsibility to do all this?
Yeah, they printed them all.
Okay, so I mean, I don't really need eight hundred pages. I would just like the digital copy, so. I don't.
Um, is it possible to ask the applicant for thumb drives or, um, something like that? Um, I don't know.
I can make the request.
Would that be good? You know, just, you, stick them in your little thumb drive.
Or both?
I don't know.
Yeah, I would take both. Just, it's sometimes it's easier to flip through.
Sometimes you can mark it up easier.
Yeah.
So I think we're all gonna get paper copies, but if you don't want yours, we can donate it to the library.
Sounds like the town was doing a lot of work and it's, that's the applicant's job.
No, uh, well, I don't think so, Gail. Is it cumbersome? I mean, I guess we could have the applicant's. I mean, I guess we could have the applicant bear some of that.
I will tell you that when SOV submitted their application, it was in a very large binder. And the sections were all divided and enumerated. And that is not what happened with the CST application. It came in in two large cardboard board boxes. With the exception of one application that was assembled for town clerk.
Well, let's see if we can get them to make it a little bit more palatable to the board.
So they said, they gave us the copies? I guess it's just like in a box.
They gave us a big stack of paper.
We, could we, I think that's a good suggestion. Could we maybe not spend too much time on how it's gonna get collated?
Just give it to us.
I defer to Gail on her organizational skills to do that. Certainly, that would be good.
All right, Gail, it's in your hands. And then on the consultant list, that's been transferred to you from Greg. So you've got a bunch of names and you're engaging now.
Yes. So we will, we have a large applicant list of engineering, list of engineers. I will compare that with the engineers used by the applicant to exclude any of those, obviously. Also review it with our public works department to see if they've worked with any of these engineers, whether we should include or exclude some or include some others that they may recommend. And then we'll, based on kind of the skills that we need, we'll whittle that down to about three or four that we'll recommend to get proposals for, so.
Okay, thank you. I put together a very rudimentary schedule on, on the application just with the public hearing being continued. And I have it starting sometime at the end of February and probably stretching into early May.
You're optimistic.
Well, I put something together. So anyway, it'll be on our plate for several months coming up. So that's it on major business. Let's just get through these liaison reports. Senior housing bylaw. Who's gonna speak on that? Anyone? Anything happening? No action?
We have not.
Harbor management plan advisory group, Sarah?
Yep, we have that. The recommendation from Urban Harbors Institute who's doing the management plan is to actually have kind of a listening session in the cafeteria with stations. And I think we picked March 19th as the date. There was some discussion about other ways to do it, but that was the consensus from our committee. So that's our tentative date to have input on the issues that people think about with the harbor. The other interesting thing is that the harbor management plan actually has a fairly extensive boundary, study boundary, which goes inland quite a way, particularly around issues that affect the harbor. At our last meeting, we also extended the study area out to our three-mile boundary because we have a LNG, what do they call it? LNG tanker offloading site. We have commercial fishing. And I believe there's a wastewater, several wastewater discharges. And there's one other issue of significance within our three-mile boundary. So the study area is quite large. We are also considering largely excluding the major issues around Singing Beach because there are other people who are working on Singing Beach. And it could consume a lot of our resources. So that's something that we're debating. Certainly, Singing Beach is a treasure and important piece of our coastline. But there are lots, it's a, it's a, there are a lot of comprehensive, we could go down a rat hole there, I think, pretty quickly in terms of public access and parking and backgrounds and other things. So our suggestion was for the moment was to treat Singing Beach on a cursory level and let the people who are working on Singing Beach, the select board and the Parks and Rec, deal with the policy issues around that. So that's, that's still in flux. If our public, if our listening session shows otherwise that that's, that there are a lot of issues there that we should do instead of other things, like fishery closures and density and safety in the main harbor, the, what we consider our harbor, then, then we'll rethink that.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I have questions on Sarah. On the CPC, we met last week and voted the projects. I put a copy of what was voted in your packets, some worksheet that, that is, they're going to, it's not final yet, but it's pretty much the approved projects that are gonna be going to town meeting under the CPC grant and muddies.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So the Western Woods.
Western Woods.
So those parcels were all researched when Sue Brown was here? And I'm wondering why they're being researched again?
It's, there's, it was unfinished work. Wasn't all done, from what I understand. There's still work to be done. I don't know if,
So is it?
I think Jack is on. Jack, can you explain the Western Woods?
Yeah, good evening. The, the $25,000 grant is an additional amount to continue the process. There's much more land that they have not researched yet.
So it's a grant? So it's not on the CPC funding?
No, it's, it's a CPC funded, Jack, right?
It is CPC funded, correct.
It's not a grant.
So.
When the CPC recommends funding, it's, we call it a grant.
Oh, okay, all right. So it says, so is somebody gonna be working for the assessor doing this?
I believe so.
Yeah, the assessor has a title searcher and a clerk that's been working for about eight, eight years now on the project. They brought quite a bit of land over into town ownership and into conservation restricted land already.
So is there like a summary?
The Conservation Commission is also working on management of the Western Woods with a different chunk of money.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, it struck me that it's been going on for so long that it's,
Yeah, it's a long project.
Is there like a summary of what's been done and what hasn't, still needs to be done?
I guess we could get something as to where they stand. I think Sue Brown was, had a map at one point of what lands were identified and what were left.
The town, the town, excuse me, this is Jack again. The town, town assessor has a spreadsheet showing everything.
Okay. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Anybody? Sue, I know you went to the ZBA, anything? Still here. Anybody else have a liaison report? Approval of the regular minutes of 12:11. Has anyone reviewed them?
Yes.
Any comments?
Nope.
Recommend of approval?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote? This is Creighton.
Yes.
Still great?
Yes.
This is Teddy?
Yes.
This is Spolley?
Yes.
Spolley?
Yes.
This, do we see him?
I haven't looked at them, so I'm going to abstain.
The chair votes yes. Anything else that hasn't been, you wanna bring up? Why don't I take the motion?
Hold on, I have one. What did, what did we decide last meeting about our goals for the, we weren't up in heaven? Oh, and I saw your report.
What report?
Your, your yearly report.
Oh, yeah.
I was just gonna say, and ask Christine, but you, if it's Christina or Christine, you put Christine. If it matters.
Do you like Christina or Christine for the official town?
Christina.
Which one?
It's Christina.
Yeah, can you make that change to Christina in that report and send it along? I think she's looking for it.
Be happy to.
So I get, yeah, my original question was just that are we gonna have goals or are we?
So,
I forget where we left off.
Yes, so I thought about it. I think we've got enough on our plate for this year. But I'll be, I'll be happy to talk about them at our next meeting and put it on as an agenda item. If the board feels we'd like to discuss our goals for calendar year 2024. It's the pleasure of the board, I will do that.
I think it's a good topic, we should do it. But just, I think we can do it during the meeting. I don't think it's,
Okay, yeah, I think,
I mean, they don't,
The logistics of getting together outside of this is problematic.
Oh, for a retreat?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think we're gonna be capable.
Okay, so,
But I think it's good for a board to have.
Okay, so think about some goals. I'll put it on the agenda for next. Join? I love that. Otherwise, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Are you accepting any public comments?
Excuse me?
Are you accepting any public comments there?
I did at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.
Do you have a public comment? I'll take it if it's brief.
I, very brief. I really appreciate what you're doing, the planning board, zoning board, and task force, all these groups that work together because really frustrating for a lot of reasons, not only to you, but to us who are not part of it. So I think I want to give you caution because we came here, my husband and I, with our children 40 years ago, exactly to this year. And we still live in the same house. And we're not very many people, we're not a large number of people from that time that still live here. And we see a big change in town as everything goes. And now with this task, task, task force for the MBTA, there are a lot of different things happening. And I don't know if you're aware as boards, what's going on because we live downtown and we see what is happening. In our neighboring area, actually, two of our properties we own are, all the properties around them, except one has sold within the last year because of the potential law of MBTA. And the people who bought them were not really people who are families to keep them, but just to build. And they started already building more than half percent of the land. And they have plans to present them to you soon, some of them. So I, I think it's a wonderful idea that you're doing all this and you're planning. But the people need to know more because everybody says crazy things out there. You never know. I read the paper. I come to meetings for that reason. So I get to hear actually from you instead of going to hear somebody else who will tell me something and it's totally different. And I read the last comment, the last paper article that I read was saying that you eliminated some of the areas that they were considered for the MBTA, which is on B Street, C Street, and so on. I don't know why, because it's very close to the train. And you have Desmond, Desmond and it's already too overpopulated. And Brook Street, Brook Street, all the houses on the left side who touch the Brook. They have changed three or four times ownership since we came. And they all flood, all of them flood. They all have pumps. Desmond houses, we're the only house without a pump. And because it was built the way it was built, above the level where floods come. And what happened last week, last Saturday, it was something I'd heard of. That's the first time we saw what actually can happen. And these people are going crazy now trying to build so close with each other because they want to build more and eventually sell them or rent them, whatever they're going to do. But we have to have a little bit more study done about this flooding area that we live in. And back in, talking about groundwater, the state had funded back in the 1990s a great big study. This, Mr. Southgate, who is now the, you know, still here, he was a member of our committee, he remembers well. I remember we were in a committee about not wanting the area with the high school to be there because of the water and so on. I paid actually myself $650 the cricket to put that article about the groundwater that was studied. And it was paid by the state, most of the time, most of it, by the state. And it had all the information. So the town has the information from that time. It was a great big study done about the groundwater. And you can go from there, you know, take that one and get to the new one, something that has come out since then, that is new or whatever. So I really will urge you to just pay very good attention to what actually is happening, you know, everywhere. I know you're working as boards and so on, but maybe having those meetings that you suggested is a great idea for the public so they can come and see there. And that's all there is. Don't ask 500 questions, you know, it's there. You know, there, that's what we're thinking. That's what is going to be happening. Then people will not go crazy about rumors and whatever, everybody understands and so on. And I'm sure it's hard on you who have to make the decisions and do all this. But it helps the public not to go on rhetorics and, you know, just misinformation and to have something that is substantial they can see there. And then they can decide also themselves if it's something they like or not. And I don't know who is going to, you know, do that at the end. But anyway, thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. I adjourned. All those in favor? Any follow-ups? Yeah, see you in two weeks. Thank you.